Okay, welcome one, welcome all to our formal session this evening. Today's invocation will be by Pastor Scott Butler from Atlantic Shores Baptist. We could all please rise.
Let's pray together. Gracious Almighty God, we come before you today grateful for the privilege to serve and to support those you have placed under our leadership here in Virginia Beach. Give us an eagerness to be good shepherds, just as you are, our good shepherd. May we view our fellow man with eyes of compassion. May we give voice to those needing courage and relief to the harassed and helpless. May we be willing to consider others better than ourselves with wisdom and humility being our identifying attributes. May we know when to respond with strength and when to correct with gentleness, and may we find comfort in the nudges from your guiding hands leading us toward righteousness. I ask all of this in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Amen. And may I ask for a moment of silence for all of those heroes who paid the ultimate price to make our nation great. And thank you. Now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Yes, Your Honor, all present excluding Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay. At this point, we're, may I ask for a certification of the closed session? Do we have a motion?
Second.
The vote is open. By a vote of ten to zero, you've certified the closed session and been accorded with a motion to recess.
Okay, now I'm going to ask for the approval of the following minutes, the informal and formals, formal sessions of May 2nd, 2023, the special former session of May 4th, 2023, and the special formal session of May 9th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
One second. The vote is open. By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, now is a very important part of our program that we acknowledge several people by a proclamation who have done tremendous things for the city. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation created Preservation Week in 1973 to spotlight grassroots efforts in historic preservation in America. And whereas President Richard M. Nixon signed a revolution, resolution designing the week of May 6th to May 12th, 1973, National Preservation Week. And whereas National Trust expanded the celebration to a long observance in 2005. And whereas states and communities across the country now recognize the month of May as Historic Preservation Month. And whereas the theme of Historic Preservation Month 2023 is people saving places. And whereas the Virginia Beach City Council established a Historic Preservation Commission in 2008 and to advise them on all issues related to the preservation of historic buildings and structures and sites in the city. And whereas the majority of work in historic preservation is done by interested individuals in local communities and encouragement of state and local and federal governments. And whereas the Historic Preservation Commission recognizes the work of early preservationists, both individuals and organizations, whose dedication to the preservation of older buildings has left Virginia Beach in a rich legacy of 18th century buildings and structures. Whereas Preservation, a statewide nonprofit, has preserved the 1970, not 1792 Cape Henry Lighthouse since 1930. And whereas the Princess County Virginia Beach Historical Society preserves the 1764 Pembroke Manor and the 1759 Upper Wolf's Air Properties. And whereas in the 20s, Grace Keeler enlisted the aid of the Metropolitan Museum of Art to preserve the 1719 Thoroughgood House. And whereas Henry Clay Hafheimer II formed Atten Thoroughgood House Foundation in the 1950s to ensure preservation of the Thoroughgood House. And whereas William Oliver acquired the 1725 Lynn Haven House in 1925 and maintained it through few changes until his family donated it to Preservation Virginia in 1971 for its preservation. Whereas Dorothy M. Wood donated a, uh, 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 more, Dorothy Moore donated a preservation easement to the Virginia Historic Preservation Easement Program to preserve the Circuit 1720 Weblen House. And whereas the White House family donated a preservation easement to the Virginia Historic Preservation Easement Program to preserve the 1779 Pleasant Hall House. Whereas Neil Kellum restored and preserved the Pleasant Hall House and Circuit 1720's Palladium House known as the Wolf's Air Plantation. Whereas the mayor and the city council support the preservation of Virginia Beach's diverse and rich heritage and historic resources. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month. And we're going to have Sharon Prescott to come up and any other members that may be here.
Let me say a few words.
We are honored and pleased to accept this from City Council and appreciate your support that has been given to our commission through the years and hope that you'll continue with that support as our work will not be done. Thank you.
I got to get a little ladder for here. Okay, now for a proclamation for the Public Works Week. And Jeremy Klein, Deputy Director, and Philip Coder, Operations Engineer and Councilperson, Grous has kindly volunteered to read the proclamation. Do we have those folks here? Come on up.
All right, welcome. Whereas public works infrastructure is above, below, and all around us, because of public works, we are able to have clean waters, safe streets, efficient traffic, and livable communities. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that could not be provided without their dedicated efforts, who perform at all levels. And whereas these professionals are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, public buildings, traffic systems, beaches and waterways, roads and streets, stormwater systems, and other structures and facilities that are absolutely essential to our citizens. And whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, the health, safety, and comfort of this city greatly depend on these services. And whereas we, as city leaders, seek to enhance the prestige of the often unsung heroes of our city, the public works professionals who serve the public good every day with quiet dedication. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27, 2023, Virginia Beach Public Works Week in Virginia Beach, and I call upon all citizens to salute the hard work, accomplishments, and commitment of these dedicated members of the Virginia Beach Public Works Department. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this 16th day of May, 2023. Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Very well deserved. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to a public comment on the potential rezoning of a portion of the interfacility traffic area, ITA, to allow light industrial uses, Project Wayne. Mr. Dehaney, we have Mr. Taylor Adams to give an update.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Adams will give a quick overview of some changes that we've learned in light of current conversations and dialogue with the developer.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mr. Dehaney. What we quickly wanted to share, and I think that we've got, we've got an image that we're, that we're trying to put up on the screen here, the big thing that we want to talk about, and, and, one, I want to, before, while we're getting the, the image up, I want to thank all of the community members that came to the, to the Creeds Rattan Center last night to, to hear a presentation on the, on how the plan has evolved, as well as asked questions. I want to thank you all for your time this afternoon, and, and I know many members of the community had an opportunity to probably, to tune into the briefing this afternoon, but just to, for those that didn't, we wanted to, we wanted to quickly cover the, the way that the land, the, the land need has evolved on this project. Certainly where this began, there was a request for all of the land that the city had within the ITA, of course, that, as you saw in your staff report, that's in your, in your packet, that is, that land plan for all of the real estate would not be consistent with your current, with the current ITA plan or your comprehensive plan. And working, and working to, with the prospect to better understand their real estate needs, we've been able to significantly condense the site. And so, yeah, for the, for the members of the community that are tuning, tuning in, and as well for those that are in the room, you'll see a map on the screen. We've been able to condense the total need of this project down to the 150 acres that you see reflected in yellow. That is at the northern end of the ITA. That land has no adjoining residential use, and that is land that was, that was initially intended to be zoned I-2, which is a heavy industrial use so that it could be used as a potential municipal services center. With that evolution of the plan, we've been able to remove the conflict with, with, with your current comprehensive plan and ITA plan, we believe. That said, it's important for me to note that, that you, in that I-2 zoning, that was, it was not contemplated that we would put manufacturing there, however, it's, I-1 is a less intensive use than I-2, and so we thought that if there was, that this might be something that, that you all took as a, as a nice evolution of the project. Also, we've heard loud and clear as has the prospect that there's real need in the community to, to ensure that agricultural lands are protected. And so what you'll see beneath the yellow triangle is a green, is sort of a green pass. That green pass is meant to represent a potential preservation easement. One of the things, we, we do, recognizing where the community is on this potentially, and some of the comments that we've received from you all, we wanted to provide additional assurance that there would not be encroachment below this line, that this truly is all that the development prospect needs. And so you, what you're seeing there is land that would, that the city would maintain ownership of, but could potentially, if it was your will and the community's will, overlay with a 100-acre preservation easement to prevent any, any further encroachment south. That is, Mayor, that's basically the update. We had a much longer presentation this afternoon than I'm sure most of the community members saw, but we did want to make sure that everyone had that update.
Okay, any points of clarification required from Council at this point? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Really appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
The first speaker for public comment is Patricia Davis. After Ms. Davis is Jennifer Olmstead.
Good evening.
I know many of you up here already, so thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. My name is Pat Davis. I represent Courthouse Estates, 1,157 homes. I'm the president and the appointed representative to speak tonight again in oppose encroachment on the green zone, or the green line. I want to thank you, Mayor Dyer, and the Honorable Barbara Henley, the Second District Representative, the Council, the City Manager, and all of the city staff that works here. I realize public input is not always easy or comfortable, because whenever somebody comes to you, they have concerns. It might be positive or negative, but the importance is to listen to what they have to say and understand where they're coming from. So with that said, I'm hoping that your willingness to listen and make the best decisions for the homeowners is at the top of your priority tonight. Sorry about that. A little nervous.
Oh, you're doing fine.
When making the decisions, there's three areas that we always look at with our HOA. One, is it lawful? What are the needs of the community? And then are we doing our due diligence as leaders? Respectfully speaking to all of you, I want to ask this question. Is Project Wayne lawful? According to the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, Southern Watershed Management Ordinance and Traditional Area Aircraft Accident Potential Zone, by even considering rezoning, City Council is violating its own plan. Running risk by even, running risk of potentially diverting water, increased pollution into the watershed areas, stormwater flooding from loss of permeable land. It puts homeowners in danger of aircraft crashing when reducing open space. Setting a precedence for manufacturing leads ways to expanding more manufacturing and permits private sales of land to manufacturing companies. The list of negative effects goes on. According to your comprehensive plan, Princess Anne Commons is currently designated, I thought I had 10 minutes.
Three minutes.
Oh, I'm in trouble then, because they told me 10. They told me 10, I'm representing an org.
This is a public comment, unless the mayor, everybody gets three minutes, it's not a planning item.
Three minutes.
It's a land? Okay, well, the bottom line is that Courthouse Estates opposes the Project Wayne or any rezoning for agriculture to industry. It opposes setting a precedence for trespassing the green line transitional areas.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
I'm grateful. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Olmstead, and then CJ White.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council members, you may recognize me as the leader of a children's nonprofit, a rewarding but very stressful job, but I've also been a horse farmer in Punggobak Bay for almost 25 years. USDA Farm Number 1658. When I leave Seton's Campus in the traffic and stoplights of central Virginia Beach, I cross over Princess Anne Road past the rural green line, and I take a deep breath. The sky is big, the fields are green most of the year. I'm headed home to a place that restores and reenergizes me for whatever crisis the next day brings. Love of my rural community sparked the creation of Back Bay Journal in 2010. The journal informs on issues unique to our country life, how to coexist with bobcats and coyotes, what to do if a bear crosses the road to get to the other side, which also happens to be your yard, and why there's value in vultures. But the journal wasn't enough for me to fully express the beauty of my community, so I wrote a book about it, and a second, and a third, and a fourth. The Southern Point Collection is technically fiction but inspired by a real place. Readers from the U.S., Japan, Spain, India, the U.K., and other countries sometimes contact me to ask, is this place real? I assure them it is, but lately I wonder, for how long? I'm worried, worried that the wildlife and the green space of our farms and refuge may disappear soon. My new book focuses on an environmental crisis born of overdevelopment of rural Southern Point, Virginia Beach. Sound familiar? We who live at and below the green line are stewards of the land for our families, for the songbirds, deer, and bobcats, and turtles, and eagles who cannot speak for themselves, but also for the 457,000 folks from Virginia Beach and thousands more who visit to horseback ride, birdwatch, pick berries, cycle, kayak, fish, or just go for a drive and take that breath of fresh air that restores and reenergizes them before returning to their hectic daily lives. Our rural landscape is a finite resource, and development is chipping, no hacking away at this resource. One of the main characters in From Afar addresses City Council. A pending development project is shelved, and residents breathe a sigh of relief. That's fiction. Here's a fact. In the 2015 study, The Benefits of Nature Experience, subjects were asked to walk in either a rural or urban setting, and their state of mind was analyzed upon completion. The results? Compared to the urban walk, the nature walk resulted in decreased anxiety, rumination, and negative affect, and preservation of positive affect, as well as cognitive benefits. Bratman et al. Project Wayne is making steps forward. We residents below the green line cannot stop it, but you can. Please consider the ramifications of destroying, whether it's 175 or 250 acres of open rural space that we can never replace.
Thank you very much. Most appreciated.
Thank you.
The next, the next speaker is CJ White, and after Mr. White is Theodore Sharple.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I am CJ White, a native of Virginia Beach and a student of Kimpsville High School. Today, I just wanted to very briefly ask a few questions regarding Project Wayne. This project could have a, could be massive for our city in both the industrial area and agricultural sector. Many people, however, have concerns about the actual infrastructure and how it will affect their local land and the city as a whole. The first question would be, what is this project actually accomplishing? Despite researching and trying to understand, I would like to know more about what the project actually entails. I do know about the green line and how this area was supposed to remain untouched, but are there any actual benefits to building on this land? We have heard from city leaders that it could produce over 400 jobs and create a big boom in the economy, however, I would like to know how. Along with that, will this project actually affect any land or any forms of agriculture? Agriculture is a big part of our city, and farming is also a business. Will Project Wayne handicap that industry? If so, is there a possible solution to fix the faults, if they exist? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next speaker is Theodore Sharple, and then got John Gudzinski.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me this evening. My wife and I bought our house, in the area that we bought, for the character of the neighborhood, the zoning requirements, the green light, and what it, a green line, and what it stood for, or what it stands for, I'm not sure what it stands for at this point, but the neighborhood that we live in, the builder did a fabulous job building, I live in West Neck, with a, but he didn't, he had his feet held to the fire prior, prior to building any houses. He had to build a golf course first, and for all good reason. Now we're struggling to protect it from development. We're, we're beginning to see the beginning of a great concept in this geographic area go bad. We're afraid that small exceptions to zoning requirements, which we're considering presently, will lead to big, big exceptions down the road. We fear flooding issues, traffic issues, and other, and overbuilding issues. That's our concern. We bought here for the reasons that I've outlined. I thank you for listening to me this evening. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming, sir.
And I would ask, I would ask the City Council to please consider not accepting this for, for a number of reasons, including the ones that my predecessors have spoken of.
Thank you, sir.
Sean Gudzinski, and then Dean McClain.
Nothing brings an aviator greater joy than flying back home, and Virginia Beach has been that home for 30 years now. I've relished the sight when returning from deployment in Iraq, and I still relish it today, returning from work as an airline pilot. As president of the Christopher Farms Homeowners Association, I share this sentiment with 166 households. Tonight, our Board of Directors has authorized me to speak on their behalf. Our quality of life depends on three things: our relationship with the land, our relationship with the city, and our city's relationship with us. Our relationship with the land is defined in terms of flooding and stormwater management. The ITA master plan of 2017 makes it clear how important it is to protect the sensitive land in our area and our relationship with the Albemarle watershed. We have and continue to be subject to flooding. Paving over soil, ripping up trees, and eliminating farmland will only make things worse. Our relationship with the city pivots on our own quality of life. To include open public spaces for active and passive recreation, bike paths, running trails, tree canopies, and a natural beauty you've heard about so far, the ITA master plan recognized this. We do not want to see our community turned into a Florida or New Jersey-style monotonous maze of desolate buildings, industry, and strip malls. Finally, the city should invest in the goodwill of its citizens by providing consistent, dependable, open, and long-term planning. Christopher Farms has directly witnessed how the city's real estate department held us to task but was intentionally noncompliant with city code for their favored developers when it came to subdivision, subdivision signs, how planned developments such as the factory at CCAC belied expectations, and how housing areas have been built in known flood zones. We've retained 750 acres, now 150. What, what are we going to believe? Our Board of Directors would like to send a strong and clear message that we do not approve of rezoning below the green line. Invest in our goodwill instead of a spreadsheet. Invest in our quality of life instead of the lure of developers, and invest in our land, because that is what defines where we live, how we live, and why we live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next speaker is Dean McClain, and then Melissa Droul.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Dean McLean, and I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association to urge Council to consider exploring amendments to the ITA, the Interfacility Traffic Area Vicinity Master Plan, and allow your professional economic development folks to compete for Project Wayne. At the outset, let me say that CBA is a regional organization that represents the shelter industry, and we have stated for decades, homes are where the jobs go to rest at night. So it'd be no surprise that our members would be elated to hear that Virginia Beach could place itself in the running for a large medical project manufacturing company hiring over 400 employees. Furthermore, the opportunity to have as much as half, $500 million investment added to the city's tax base excites everyone, because it assists in reducing the city's reliance upon the residential tax base that provides approximately 84% of its revenues. CVBIA has supportive of many of the major efforts to diversify and solidify the city's economic tax base, including supporting the development of Virginia Beach Town Center, protecting and maintaining the Naval Air Station Oceana and Ventress facilities, recruiting of the manufacturers such as steel in the 1970s, the creation and adoption of the funding of the Agricultural Reserve Program in 1995. As stated on page 37 of the master plan, the development restrictions that limit development allowed the city to consider the area for a range of interesting environmental, educational, recreational, and economic activities that will benefit the citizen of Virginia Beach. We strongly urge the Council to consider the economic opportunities that utilizing a small percentage of the interfacility traffic area lands that are adjacent to the existing or planned infrastructure for the metal product manufacturing campus. In closing, as we sadly found out during the COVID epidemic, this nation has a long way to go to onshore strategic industries such as drug and medical supplies. We hope that Council will consider pursuing Project Wayne, diversifying the city's economic base, and start manufacturing vital, vital medical supplies in our nation again. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Melissa Drought, and then Natalie De La Rios.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I am a 25-year Virginia Beach resident and graduate of Virginia Beach Public Schools. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the proposed rezoning of the parcel below the Green Line for industrial reuse. This motion aims to convert the area into a manufacturing plant with the promise of increased revenue and jobs. However, I firmly believe that we must preserve our Green Line and hold steadfast to the values established by past city leaders. The Green Line and transition area below it serves as a crucial barrier containing urban development and safeguarding the delicate balance between nature and progress. These wetlands and agricultural areas are not merely patches of land, but vital ecosystems that provide invaluable ecological resources. They act as natural filters, cleansing our waterways, mitigating floods, and providing habitat for countless species. By preserving these areas, we not only protect our environment, but also enhance our quality of life and the health of our community. Furthermore, it's important to consider the potential repercussions of developing these lands for manufacturing. Such industrial activities often come with pollution and increased traffic and noise. We must not underestimate the long-term impacts on our air, water, and ecological health. The Green Line policies were implemented precisely to prevent such encroachments and to foster sustainable economic growth that respects the natural landscape. Included in the most recent version of the city's comprehensive plan are details about the inadequacy of much of the surrounding area for development due to the "low elevation, high groundwater" table, documented sea level rise, and recurrent flooding, which have led to the determination that stormwater and environmental quality management techniques that have proven successful elsewhere in the city will not work as well in this area. This doesn't mean we can't continue to partner with companies that bring jobs and revenue to our city. We just need to be more creative about how and where we choose to do these things. I challenge the city council to look toward underutilized, already-developed areas north of the Green Line, where the environment and community would not be as significantly impacted by this project. With the newly consolidated 150-acre proposal, I feel confident that city leaders can find an alternative location that allows us to leverage existing infrastructure rather than building new infrastructure and significantly altering surrounding infrastructure to accommodate this project. This approach is ultimately more cost-effective and more strategic use of tax dollars. In conclusion, I urge the city council to prioritize the preservation of our Green Line policies. Our community's future and the well-being of its residents depend on making decisions that value the preservation of our natural heritage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Natalia De La Rios, and then Sandra De La Rios.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Natalia De La Rios. I'm a senior at Princess Anne in the IB program, as well as the Environmental Studies Program at the Brock Center. This fall, I will be attending Harvard University for Environmental Science and Public Policy. Science and policy must go hand in hand. As a public servant, you have the ethical obligation to consider the scientific land and water studies from 2017 when deciding the future of our wetlands and farmlands. As an environmental studies student at the Brock Center, I know the process to preserve the incredible pleasure house plant land was difficult and had to balance public opinion, the needs of the city, and the value of the environment on the Lynn Haven inlet. The land that could have become just another waterfront apartment building became a treasure for current and future generations while also promoting valuable scientific and educational collaboration. In the informal meetings, we heard the mayor defend this unfortunate project by saying that VB is running out of space and that we need businesses to lower costs and bring in new income, and I agree. However, industrial manufacturing will not provide the research and educational jobs promised. Jobs actually boost the economy with good careers and entice young people to make their futures in VB. The textile industry, which is notorious, and the medical textile industry, which is notorious for pollution, poor working conditions, and low salaries, is a forfeit for the unique qualities of VB that make it so special. I understand the need for economic growth, so I ask, why not focus on bringing environmental and agricultural research, as promised in 2017, that not only boosts our economy and entices people to move here, but actually support both our residents and our beautiful ecosystems? Attracting businesses that can either make use of already-developed sites, like the abandoned shopping centers mentioned before, or that can make sustainable use of this land, would ultimately be a decision that reinvests itself back into the local area by retaining flood buffers of natural vegetation, as well as promoting new advancements in agriculture and beyond. For example, an agricultural research facility, recycling center, environmental education center, or my idea of a composting facility, would be beneficial uses of this land that bring positive economic, social, and environmental impacts with it. As a student of the VB CPS Environmental Studies Program at the Brock Center, I'm living proof of the merits of environmental education, having had opportunities to write and pass two state laws relating to food and agriculture, conduct scientific field studies, and even intern with Drishthi Composting, who's actually trying to make a citywide composting site. If we are going to build anything on this land, why not make it something that will impact generations to come, like education on topics relevant to the local area and its citizens, such as agriculture? So every morning, my environmental science teacher used to play Big Yellow Taxi by Joni Mitchell, and I don't know if you've heard it, but it goes, "Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you got till it's gone?"
Thank you very much.
"In paradise, and put up a parking lot."
The next speaker is Sandra De La Rios, and then Marina Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening. In my defense, with all the new information, my speech looks really bad, and I am probably going to mess it up. My name is Sandra De La Rios. I'm a longtime resident of Southern Virginia Beach. I'm here to voice my opposition to the rezoning you're proposing. I listened to your briefing, and while I appreciated some compromises made, the same issues remain, and the information brought up brought up more questions. We're a city of unparalleled environmental riches, the largest natural bay in the world, longest pleasure beach in the world, and one of the last undeveloped coastal environments on the East Coast. We also have a thriving family farm community, which is not typically the case. You're the elected stewards of this fragile environment, which demands extremely thoughtful planning and study. There's no room for error through hasty zoning changes not supported by the science from your own studies. Your study, your 2017 study verbatim, said that the land includes expansive, non-tidal wetlands, high-quality farmland, high-water-content-forested areas, broad flatlands that do not drain well, large portions of environmentally sensitive land, and valuable natural resources. In short, it is clear that this land is not suitable for rezoning to support manufacturing. I scrapped a lot of what I was going to say, and all of my predecessors have said it so well anyway, and I wanted to address a few things. First of all, the trucks. The thought of a steady stream of trucks traveling Dam Neck to London Bridge Road is hard to fathom. If you've ever been in traffic at the intersections along Dam Neck, it can take you 15 minutes just to get to the light. Add trucks and the cars of 400 employees to that, and the quality of life has diminished already with such an increasing amount of traffic and noise, and this will only exacerbate that. As a former teacher and a parent, I'm concerned that there's like a bait and switch, because essentially, the promise of biomedical business and the park-like campus, working in tandem with the university, and all of the research that was going to be happening, is not happening. So far, what we've got is a warehouse, and I'm not bashing the business, you know, more power to them, and now we've got, you know, jobs sewing garments. I mean, I'm thinking, what opportunities are there for our kids? Like, what is the average salary of those jobs? How are people going to get to those jobs, the people that need those jobs? Is the income going to sustain somebody when they're trying to pay the extremely high rents that we have in our area? I mean, I don't see who this is going to benefit, honestly. So, in closing, I just would like to say that you have an extraordinary opportunity to put Virginia Beach at the forefront of environmental and agricultural research and collaboration, on your original science-backed plan for a well-designed space with scientific collaboration, research, education, conservation, recreation. Create the proposed research farm and the university agricultural program that you promised. Public support was there in 2017, and it continues to be there for such efforts. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marina Smith. Billy Allman. After Mr. Allman is John Perryman.
Good evening. I had a script, but this is more speaking from the heart. So I don't live in a Southern Rivers watershed, but I was fortunate enough to work on the ITA plan for two years. So all of these people behind me showed up at all the community meetings and expressed their concerns for the future of their farmland and the waters in the Southern Rivers watershed. My biggest concern is that we have probably one of the best plans we've ever done, and we're not listening to it. We're not listening to what these people told us in 2013, and then again in 2017, is that we're trying to preserve this area. And so I really ask you to take a really hard look at the decisions you're getting ready to make and how it affects that plan. Clearly, it was one of the most well-attended public community engagement processes we've had, and I've worked on all SGA plans in the city. The most important speakers tonight were the two young students who are in that environmental science program at Brock. That's their future. What decision you're getting ready to make is their future. We're kind of past that, and so let's really think about that. Farming is $190 million engagement here in terms of economic growth to the city. Farmers are businessmen. Farming is a business, and so I ask you to really look at that. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Perryman, and then Nadine Penicia.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mayor, members of the city council, first of all, I'm grateful for your service to our community. Few of us, me included, are willing to take on the heavy lift of governing a municipality, so thank you. I'm a resident of the villages at West Neck, and my home is one lot outside the ITA overlay. We bought our home in District 2, in part based on the rural character of the district. I'm here because I can't believe you're even considering Project Wayne. In my view, it does not conform to the comprehensive plan. According to the press, Project Wayne is looking for a place to land and is considering a variety of locations. To me, this scheme feels like a suitor who first wants you to lower your standards, and then they will decide whether or not to date you. Comprehensive plan was developed in an arms-length collaborative, thoughtful engagement between government, a broad array of interest groups and residents, and now I read, some of you are advocating public engagement about Project Wayne. We already had it. It's the comprehensive plan. Princess Anne Commons in the transition area graphic at page 1-105 of the comprehensive plan depicts the southern portion of Princess Anne Commons as legend number seven, and describes its use as agriculture production and research. I understand the city owns the land and leases it for that purpose. That's cool. In fact, the economic viability section of the comprehensive plan for Princess Anne Commons at pages 2-91 and 2-92 recommends specifically excluding the southern portion of Princess Anne Commons from suburban infrastructure development. This is the area Project Wayne wants rezoned for manufacturing. Please preserve the rural character of District 2 in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Do not support Project Wayne, and do not erase the Green Line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good, pretty close. And then Martha Thoreau.
Good evening.
Hi there. Thank you, city council, Mayor Dyer, and city manager, for allowing us to do this tonight. My name is Nadine Penicia, and I'm on the board of the Back Bay Restoration Foundation. The points I would like to present represent those of our entire board and membership. One, the Back Bay Restoration Foundation is the only nonprofit organization solely dedicated to conserving and improving Virginia Beach's two southern watersheds. We attended last night's Farm Bureau meeting where Deputy City Manager Taylor Adams described the revised proposal for Project Wayne. Although the site-specific impacts appear to be reduced from the original proposal, BBRF joins the city's Green Ribbon Committee, Lynn Haven River Now, and Concerned Citizens in strongly opposing this project. Project Wayne would encroach south of the city's Green Line as established in 1979. Project Wayne would violate the city's interfacility traffic area and vicinity master plan as adopted in 2017. The land being considered for Project Wayne consists of poorly-drained, hydroic soils indicative of wetlands. Adding up to 150 acres of impervious surface by filling wetlands would be extremely harmful to water quality and would undoubtedly contribute to increased flooding in the city's southern watersheds. Project Wayne would require significant tax dollars to upgrade road systems to accommodate increased traffic. Project Wayne would serve to eliminate current agricultural production in favor of a less environmentally-friendly industrial production, thus weakening one of the three economic drivers of our city. Finally, the current proposal of designating 100 acres south of Project Wayne as preservation offers little to those of us concerned with the conservation of our southern watersheds. Over BBRF's 35 years of working to conserve the city's southern watersheds, we have witnessed many detrimental zoning changes that serve to promote development despite previous council commitments to environmental integrity. Unfortunately, a commitment to preserve an area today gives us no assurance that this promise will constrain future city councils. At this point, I would like all those who represent at this council meeting to rise and show your support for BBRF's position. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, welcome to you.
I'm sorry, and then Matt Baumgartner. I apologize.
Several years ago, this council body chose not to discuss the need for changes to our voting system. Excuses were made by those in power, and in frustration, a lawsuit was brought on by just two women who were taking a stand for what they believed was right. As a result, millions of taxpayers' dollars were spent by this body to fight the lawsuit, which, by the way, is still ongoing. Many, many people in this city think this body unwise in this regard and resent the waste of their money. Flash forward to today and the decision before you to go along with the mysterious Project Wayne. In this folly, you dare waste more of our money in defying us and our desire to maintain the agricultural district of our city as you violate the boundaries of the Green Line of Virginia Beach. You're already putting money into this thing, which flies in the face of common sense, and it seems are poised to likely waste untold sums on the ride down the latest, greatest rabbit hole. Beware, council. Just this month, on May 11, the Supreme Court of Virginia turned down a request by the huge business known as Wegmans Grocery Stores to consider a decision it had made in support of a circuit court ruling that found, quote, "that neighbors had a right to challenge local approvals of the grocery store's giant plans to build a massive distribution center." The implications for this case are huge, as it will have the potential to influence countless cases within the state of Virginia. The decision is literally giving people its legal say in what will be built beside them. Imagine that. So, in my opinion, you will be ill-advised to decide to go forward with this Project Wayne folly, for indeed, there will be challenges by those stakeholders, also known as regular people, who live in that area. Furthermore, in my opinion, you as our representatives will be exhibiting a total failure to adequately honor the fiduciary duty you have to all of the citizens of Virginia Beach. honor the fiduciary duty you have to all of the citizens of Virginia Beach. Truthfully, we should not be having this conversation, but if you insist, before you go any further, please have your city attorney, you know, the guy that the taxpayers pay for, review the Morgan versus Board of Supervisors of Hanover County whereby, quote, "the decision of the judges was unanimously in favor of the neighbors." Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Baumgartner, and then Jim Servera.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, distinguished members of City Council, Manager Duhany and Deputy Manager Adams. My name is Matt Baumgartner. I reside at 2469 Bayview Avenue. Been a resident of Virginia Beach since 1992. I'm the founder and president of Garten Property Solutions, a small commercial real estate development consulting firm. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the Hampton Roads Area Commercial Real Estate Association, and I'm the co-chair of the Architectural Preservation and Zoning Committee from a civic league. This evening, I come before you as a private citizen. During my nearly 30-year career in real estate development, I've been involved in multiple site selection searches. Sometimes these searches can drag on for years, but sometimes they come at you fast and furiously, which seems to be the case for Project Wayne. In order for a city such as Virginia Beach to continue to grow and prosper, it has to be ready at a moment's notice to respond to opportunities such as Project Wayne. Yes, the details of the project are mostly unknown to the citizens of Virginia Beach at present, but based on the efforts and energy I see coming from the Development Authority, this one seems to be a potential winner. The area in question lies within the Special Economic Growth Area, number 4, known as Princess Anne Commons. In the current VB Comprehensive Plan, Section 1.4, Princess Anne Commons and Transition Area, it stated very clearly that this law is below the Green Line. However, it goes on to say that this area is an important component of the city's overall growth, land use, planning strategy. It further states very clearly that the intention of this special growth area is to not be limited to very low densities appropriate for rural preservation. Furthermore, page 105 of the Comprehensive Plan, the Inter-Facility Traffic Area and Vicinity Master Plan, clearly indicates that the land northwest of the Virginia Beach National Golf Course is to be used for bio research and innovation park. A few years ago, I served as Executive Director of the Real Estate at Tidewater Community College. The Virginia Beach Development Authority leased space from TCC for a startup company that was conducting bio research on fatty liver disease. This was Sanyal Biotechnology. The intent of this was to help this company get off the ground while the proposed biotech research park was being readied and companies sought after to come populate it. It seems like that vision may be starting to come true. We need strong and smart economic growth in Virginia Beach in order to create high-paying jobs and increase the tax revenues, which will lower the tax burden of the citizens. High-paying jobs attract new talent, and they help retain our homegrown talent. I'm the proud father of two young ladies that have both graduated from Virginia universities and have chosen to remain in Virginia Beach. Opportunities like this one do not come along every day. This is smart growth for our city. This is the kind of growth we deserve. In conclusion, I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight, and you have my full support.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Servera. After Mr. Servera is John Sweeney.
James, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany, Ms. Barnes, thank you for having me speak. Forty-five years ago, I moved to Virginia Beach. Somebody took a hit at New Jersey. I moved from North Jersey to Virginia Beach because I saw an opportunity. I saw an opportunity of a growing, flourishing community. And you know what? It's drop-dead gorgeous, our city and our region. But let me just explain a few things about this Project Wayne. I have a few questions. Question number one, is it an American-owned company, or is it a foreign-owned company that's coming here? You have that answer. I do not. But that's very important. The second question, the jobs that it wishes to bring, are they sustainable, long-term jobs? Because if you heard me speak once before, that's one of the things that keeps a community solid, keeps the sociology of a community, or social fabric of a community together, and that is sustainable employment for our youth who want to stay in the area and make this their home because they also see opportunity. My third question, this project that we are looking at, is it in a transition area, or is it below the Green Line? From what I'm seeing, it's in a transition area, but you have that answer better than I do. And the final question that we need to look at is whether or not this particular industry is, I keep hearing manufacturing. Is it hard manufacturing? Is it heavy manufacturing? Is it open mining? Are we building to pollute? Or is it something on the lines of the Steel Corporation where we know is light industry that has good-paying employment and that folks want to go to work there? So my question's to you. If it is, in fact, an American-owned company, if we can build it, not we, if they could build it sustainable for the environment, if it's in a transition area, if it has good-paying position jobs for our local kids that we are hearing some from high school to want to stay in this area, to say, "I can go to work for this," and if it will then spur other industries nearby the same way, then we should look positively. If, on the other hand, all of that is negative, then we should look negative on it. From what I'm seeing, it could be that position that comes into the city, which could be sustainable, which could give us a foothold for younger folks to look to stay in this area as opposed to moving to Harvard and everywhere else that they wish to go to, so that we can have a sustainable, long-term social as well as economic investment in our city. But those decisions are yours. We are a democratic republic. You represent the folks from your district. I'm sure you've already had conversations with them. Will this benefit the entire city? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
The next speaker is John Sweeney. After Mr. Sweeney is Bob Pizzini.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Dyer, council members, fellow citizens, thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly about this important topic tonight. I want to just start off giving you the bluff. Bottom line up front, I'd like you to say no to rezoning this or any piece of agricultural land for industrial use, and honor the promises of this city to preserve agricultural land by way of the Green Line. I was asking myself, you know, what is the, and many people here are asking this question, what is the motivation for this project all of a sudden? And of course, it's money, right? We want revenue for the city. Mayor Dyer has stated, this is kind of a paraphrase from a news report, Virginia Beach is running out of land, and we need things like this for revenue. I submit, no, we do not. This implies that you won't stop here. There's lots of land, all the way down to the North Carolina line, that of course, you're going to want eventually, right? So what we need, instead of more revenue, is less spending. What will you do? What will you do when we actually are out of land? You're going to have to adjust. So I submit, let's make that adjustment now. Deputy City Manager Taylor Adams has said, "We get a letter that comes in, and we have to react to that letter." Fair enough. Why was your reaction not, "No, this land is not available"? If this letter came in and asked to put this place in your neighborhood, what would you say? If they wanted to put it on the beach at Sand Bridge, what would you say? If they wanted to put it on Dam Neck, what would you say? You would say, "No, that land is not available." Mr. Adams said, "This does represent a big shift in our existing policy." No, it doesn't. It represents bulldozing our existing policy. "This is nothing more than us working with the prospect to try to negotiate a deal that the community might find palatable," he said. Well, this is not palatable. He said, "We could create a southern barrier that they could not cross without additional legislative action." Well, that's what we're doing here. We're trying to find a way to cross a line we've already got. So I don't understand this. Much of this, also, some of the other things about who the manufacturer is, where they're from, are great, important questions, but they're kind of secondary, in my view. What is relevant is the citizens of this city who specifically live in this area because of its rural nature. The Green Line meant something when we made decisions to buy houses here. I don't care if Pharrell wants to build a fashion clothing manufacturer here. It's not available. Don't mistake this for anyone. I'd like you to not mistake this for anyone not liking this just because it's too big or some of the other secondary issues. It's a breach of a promise. Finally, I'd like to address our fellow citizens.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hold fast.
Bob Pizzini, and then Lisa Hartman.
Hey, Bob. How you doing?
I'm doing great, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, members of council, City Manager. I own and operate a small business at the Oceanfront. We're in our ninth year of operations. So I went through the process of establishing a business. I Fly Virginia Beach is my business, and I went through the process of establishing a business that wasn't well-known locally or nationally, and there was a lot of trepidation. So I've been through that kind of fear factor, if you will, in the development of a business. And I think that a lot of the questions that were asked tonight by Chief Servera in particular are questions that need to be answered before you can make the best-informed decision that you can make. I'm currently the Treasurer for the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce, the Executive Committee, and I was the Virginia Beach Division Chair in 2020. I've spoke to Chamber before on business matters, and I'm here tonight to speak as a resident, as a small business owner, and as a representative of the Chamber of Commerce. I know many of you participated in a recent leadership exchange to Charleston, a city that is very similar to Virginia Beach in many ways. And I think you discovered, I was unable to make the trip, but I heard that you discovered that they face many challenges similar to the challenges that we face, one of which is that land is scarce and becoming more and more scarce. The Comprehensive Plan has gotten a lot of attention tonight, so I'm going to give it just a little bit more. In Section 1.4, there's a paragraph that says, "The Princess Anne Commons offers a unique opportunity for educational, entertainment, recreational, habitat preservation, and quality economic development opportunities." And in that chapter, in that paragraph, it talks about how the ITA extends south of the Green Line. Is the land suitable for development? I think that's just a matter of site engineering in terms of the drainage and the rainwater and the conditions of the soil. That's a matter of science. I think that people can answer that, and if it is developable, then that's one thing to be considered. If it's not, then I think it's a fairly easy decision. If this project meets the objectives of the transition area and can be done in an environmentally friendly way, and what I mean by that is, 10 years ago, cities were wooing manufacturers to come to their city and build whatever it is they're going to build. And it's almost the opposite of that now. In whatever other cities in Virginia this company is considering, I'm certain these same discussions are happening with those same city councils. So those questions that Chief Servera mentioned need to be answered. What will this company do in a responsible way? Thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
The next speaker is Lisa Hartman. After Ms. Hartman is Ella Dunbar.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Lisa Hartman. I am the chairperson of the Transition Area, Inter-Facility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee, the committee with all the As, I think it was referred to before. At this time, entertaining this project is premature. We have numerous publicly vetted and adopted documents detailing the intent for this area. We have numerous studies and modeling projects regarding the impacts of sea level rise and stormwater in this area that is known to have a high water table. Moving forward with this project is the antithesis of planning. This area should be properly planned to take into consideration all known scientific information regarding sea level rise and stormwater management. Considering this or any other project in a vacuum can bring dire consequences to the surrounding neighbors and farms, which will have critical implications of our farming industry, homes downstream, and our watershed. Additionally, there is a lack of infrastructure currently in this area. Since our last Comprehensive Plan and ITA was adopted, we have more information. The modeling studies were finished for sea level rise, and I think it's important that planning take into consideration all of that information before we just jump on this project. We must do our due diligence and properly consider the entire region and send any regional plans through the planning and public vetting process. We have a Comprehensive Plan update soon. I challenge you to direct planning, to consider all of the studies and modeling projects done, consider the cost of infrastructure, and develop a sustainable plan for the area prior to considering any change. That is the only way that you can maintain the trust of the citizens and taxpayers. We have seen the money that has been poured into poorly planned and neglected projects to literally bail out neighborhoods in need. The planning process is supposed to catch those issues before it's too late. It's important to carefully consider these issues prior to entertaining this or any other project. We are not in a position to entertain any project until the proper planning and public process is in place. That is the purpose of the comp plan in the studies, and it should be used to its full extent. The amount of impervious cover will have implications far exceeding the noted preservation area in the plan that was addressed today. Again, at this point, which type of industry is irrelevant until we have a plan? Ignoring our comp plan and other studies is a waste of resources and defeats the purpose and hard work and funding that has already gone into the studies, plans, and projects. I ask you to support and respect the public process and be good stewards of the taxpayers' trust and funds. Ask for a full evaluation and review, taking into consideration our agriculture industry, the numerous studies and modeling done regarding water issues in the area, and the impacts of any projects of this sort that can have in this important area of our city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ella Dunbar. After Ms. Dunbar is Walter Camp.
Good evening. I stand opposed to the development project. Virginia Beach does not need to develop every inch of open space, particularly below the Green Line. We are entering the land of diminishing returns. This project just opens the door to further development below the Green Line. As I was reading, this was supposed to be Phase 1. There's also supposed to be a Phase 2 and 3. We need to preserve our entire green area. The jobs potentially generated do not offset the loss to the people of Virginia Beach. People come to Virginia Beach because of our quality of life. This project does not add to our quality of life. We need an open space area to be maintained. Stop the giveaways to greedy developers. Developers were allowed to build a large development in the Sand Bridge area that used to be a beneficial flood plain. My tax dollars were used to rectify their flooding problems. When will you learn? We give tax money to multimillionaires and tax breaks that are not need-based. We do not always have to be involved with every single developer that comes to town. If tax revenue is the main goal, then perhaps maybe we need to consider how we allocate our taxes and how we spend our tax money. So if we continue to do like we did with the Cavalier and give $18 million of my tax money to a developer, and then to have him come back to City Council again and say, "Oh, I want you to close this street down here at the Oceanfront," and we did it against the recommendation of the state of Virginia, so that he could have private parking or valet parking or whatever for the million-dollar houses he built out on the lawn of the Cavalier. I think that perhaps if we're looking at revenue, there are so many things that can be done, but we tend to give money away like we don't have a tax issue. I fully support the military, but I see that we're giving tax breaks for people to come and reside here because they're military retirees. Now, I know I went to school with a whole lot of kids whose parents were officers and what have you. I don't see those people saying, "I can't pay my real estate tax bill," but who ends up having to pay those taxes? So maybe that's why you're still running behind all the developers that come to town. If it's something that's need-based, I know there are people who are retired, who are disabled, they get a tax break, but the regular people here are the ones who are going to have to pick up all of that baggage and carry it forward. So maybe you need to think about who you're taxing and how much and what you're doing with our tax money. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Walter Camp, and then Susan Feathers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. I rise to speak tonight in my personal capacity, and I'd like to talk about a couple things that I haven't heard mentioned yet tonight that I think are troubling me and may be bear thought by you. I am optimistic about the future of Virginia Beach. I believe the qualities that make this city a desirable place to live, to work, to learn, to visit, to play, they're going to continue to flourish. I am not against development. They aren't making any more land, at least here, and in fact, we're working very hard to retain the land that now exists and keep it above sea level. This afternoon, council was told the parcel in question was likely the last one of its size owned by the public in Virginia Beach. Now, pessimists have said if this site isn't rezoned... Now pessimists have said if this site isn't rezoned for this prospect, then others won't come. Well, if I heard correctly, this is the last such place. If it is rezoned, there won't be a need for anyone else to come. So it seems to me it makes sense to get it right. This is the last one. With that in mind, what to do with it bears great thought and consideration. It's not a decision to be rushed into. Luckily, that's already happened, and it wasn't rushed. Over the past 40 years, plans were thoughtfully developed and regularly revisited. During that time, ownership of the land also changed. It was acquired by the city for a public purpose, to retain the military base so essential to our city's economy. Now, once the taxpayers bought the land, the plans were revised to reflect additional ways for it to serve the public. You've heard about some of these public needs, especially the new council members just in the last few months. One is the Law Enforcement Training Academy, a facility that is so old, the school system relinquished it 20 years ago. And we're regularly paying our officers and deputies to travel to North Carolina to qualify with their firearms because we no longer have a firing range here in the city. Well, this parcel is an opportunity to fix that right here where it ought to be fixed. Now, part of this land in the ITA plan was designated to relocate the solid waste transfer station down near TCC, Ops Mile, and Life Net. This afternoon, concern was expressed about odors impacting the nearby recreation areas down here in the ITA. I was the owner's rep building Ops Mile. I was there for two years, standing next to that SIPSA plant. Those concerns about odors are correct. But if we're not going to put the plant here, does that mean that it's okay to leave it on a college campus and next to Ops Mile and next to Life Net and next to those residential housing communities? My point about this is making one choice forecloses others. And if you're excited about this choice, then let's not kick the can down the road. Let's answer the question, what's going to happen with that trash transfer station? What's going to happen with that law enforcement academy training session before the opportunity is gone, before the public sells this out to a private benefit? Thank you.
The next speaker is Susan Feathers. After Ms. Feathers is Angela Termini.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all, and I am just in awe of the public. I want to thank you for making this opportunity for the public to speak to you all on such critical matters. And I have a different, something different to offer to the discussion. When I started thinking about this, it, the word resilience came into my mind, and I thought, we are one of the few cities in America that has farmland, urban farmland, which is a great resiliency factor for food security. Bear with me for a minute. Think about California, Arizona, Florida, Illinois, all of our big bread baskets that climate change is now threatening. All cities who have urban farmland are going to have greater food security going forward during climate change. Another resiliency factor, of course, has been well presented, and that is our wetlands. Besides flooding and showing slowing storm surges, the other thing is that they take up carbon dioxide and they preserve biodiversity, which is a big part of our tourism dollars. So you have to kind of think about all the pros and cons. And then I would just like to say, the discussions that have come forward from public and business, et cetera, about land use make me really understand that I think we're at a watershed in terms of how we as Americans think about using land, and that we're right at a critical point where we're going to have to start thinking about health, wellness, resilience, and climate. And that's going to start to become an umbrella over everything that we're doing. So I would like to just add those to the wonderful comments that were made here tonight, and thank you again, and thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Angela Termini. And then Teresa Langwell.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm Angela, and I live in Courthouse Estates. I just learned of Project Wayne last night on the news, and I'm opposed. I'm concerned. The name of the manufacturing company hasn't been publicly disclosed, and I think the level of transparency should be fundamental. The concept of safety has many layers. A factory or a manufacturing plant within a few miles of my home compromises my concept of safety on all levels. In factories, toxic materials and gases are burned and pumped out into the atmosphere. I want to feel safe. I don't want to be constantly concerned about which way the wind blows or of the quality of my drinking water. And until we know the name of the company, we won't even know the kinds of emissions that they pump out. The pollution, the impact on our air quality, our water quality, our wildlife, our wetlands, the traffic, the years of construction, and the impact on the values of our homes, it all concerns me. And once they get their foot in the door, how do we know that they won't continue to take more and more? The perceived economic value of this plan, it does not appear to outweigh the negative environmental impact. It's not a fair trade. We need to advocate for our safety, the safety of our environment, our wildlife, and our ecosystems. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Teresa Langwell, and then Ella Berthold.
Hi, everybody. I'm Teresa Langwell. Most of you know me, and I'm here representing myself as a citizen, as well as a Tea Party I've been listening to everything here, and I remember in the early 80s, or the 80s, somewhere around that time, when the, we were running out of water, and everybody heralded the fact that, wow, we get to, we get to, I call it stealing water from Lake Gaston, but we were able to get our drinking water from that, which I was against. And then the developers went nuts, and here we are at nearly about a half a million people. So here we are again, asking you not to go past the green line, asking you to not overbuild, to consider our watersheds, consider the environment, on and on and on. And it's all been spoken of before. And the young people that spoke here, I think it's time we start being proactive in our environment and what goes on in the city so they don't have to lap up messes that we've made or leave the area. I also have been hearing that this may not be legal, that transparency between the city and manufacturing doesn't meet the newspaper test. Obviously, either people read nothing, or they don't understand what's going on, or they haven't been told. And I think the latter is probably it. Contract rezoning, because I guess we want to rezone, I noticed there were a couple of other places in the agenda where you want to rezone from agricultural to building, to be able to build on it. Is the city engaged in an agreement with the entity? Which Project Wayne is a proxy? That was one of my questions, exactly who is behind this? Who's the manufacturer? Who are the stockholders? Is it a foreign country, just like with the windmills with Sweden and Denmark, a few other countries that are involved? Who is behind this? And where is the money coming from? Is it a private contract, private, public contract? I don't think we, you know, if somebody wants to build something, why did you even consider going, why do we have to even talk about the green line? That was already established. Somebody wants to build something, they know our rules, go by our rules, and they pay their own bills, they build their own building. If they can't afford to do it, somebody else will come along that can. We cannot pick, continue to pick losers and winners. Should be able to afford to build something if you want to. Is the city using Project Wayne as a justification of the rezoning? Are you saying because this person wants to come in and do this, we want to rezone? We want to move everything? I have the ITA plans, I've looked at them, and I wanted to throw up them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one additional speaker who is via Webex, Sandra Schenabarger. You are unmuted and may begin.
Welcome.
She is not responding, Mayor. That's all this.
Okay. All right. I just want to thank everybody for coming. This is the beginning of a process. Yes, Ms. Henley.
I am, yes.
Oh, yes. My apologies, Ms. Henley, please.
I did ask in the previous session if I can make some comments after the comments because I just really wanted the opportunity to thank all of you who came out tonight and spoke. I think we do have the feeling from the public and all of the emails that we've gotten and the other communications that we've had. If it were left up to me as a district representative, I would say we're just not going to consider this because it's not in the plan. It's not what we have been using as our planning document and our planning policy for many years since 1979, and so far, it's worked. But I have heard from the other council members that they want to have further discussion, so I suppose we will be having further discussion. I hope it will be in a forum such as this where all of you can hear all of the discussion and see all of the discussion, because I think it's very important that you have that opportunity. I could talk a long time about this particular thing and all the reasons that I feel as strongly as I do. One thing I just can't help but say is that, yes, we're running out of land, we're running out of farmland. And if we don't have farmland, if we don't have farmland, we can't grow food, and I don't think we want to depend on China or any other country for our food source. Well, the City Council recognized the importance of preserving our farmland back in 1995, and we developed the Agricultural Reserve Program. We were the first in the state to come up with a purchase of development rights program because we saw the need of preserving agricultural land. And to this, at this point, I think we have a little over 10,000 acres in the, in the program. But as a part of that program, the City Council committed to people who would agree to come into the program that we would protect the agricultural industry and that we recognize the value of the industry. And people have been willing to do that very extreme thing of selling their development rights because they have relied on this commitment from the City Council, that we do protect farmland, and we do respect the industry, and we will expect to protect it. I'm just really concerned that we are even thinking about doing something otherwise. I am very, I appreciate the idea that, well, this is only 150 acres, and we'll have a little preservation area under it to assure that it's not going further, but that's not worth a thing because anytime six members of council decide they want to take that preservation off, they can, and that's what we're seeing tonight. We're seeing council considering taking away a policy that has been in effect since 1979 that said, below the green line, there are going to be certain restrictions. And it gives me great concern. And in the previous afternoon session, when we were presented, it said, well, we have some I-1 already below the green line because the council approved that area along Princess Anne Road for a biomedical park. And yes, you see, that sets a precedent. You only have to do it one time, and you've set the precedent, and it goes away. Well, the council's intent in doing that particular development was to allow a research office park in that area that would focus on biomedical technology that would complement our educational village and our medical village, which also a part of the southern area. And we fully intended that that's what it would be. But guess what? That didn't happen. And today, the only project that has been built out there is a sheet metal firm, and it's a very good business, but it's not what was intended. And there is no way that we can, I can sit here tonight and promise you that whatever we say we're going to do with this development is going to happen, because a lot of times, council's intent does not happen. And the only way we can assure you that it will stay in the condition it's in is as we uphold the green line. And so many of you have just made fantastic comments tonight. I really feel reassured because you've done your homework, and you know that you've, you've read the studies. Even since we adopted the ITA plan in 2017, we have completed a lot more scientific data that tells us we were absolutely right with what that ITA plan said. And I appreciate Billy Allman, who was one of the consultants who worked on that, because we had a great process with the public that developed the ITA plan, and you all have cited from it what it says, which are very strong things as far as economic development goes. Agriculture is economic development. These other things that are recommended in there too, like the continuation of the amateur sports and so forth, that also is a part of economic development. So I think what we're on is a, someone said we're at a watershed moment. I think we are. And I think whatever the decision is on this issue is going to decide where we go forward. And it gives me great concern. So I will just, I do want to also say, because I have been saying this, and I, I don't know that it's really sunk in yet, and so many of your comments also said, this area where we're getting ready to put this million square feet of, I think that was a figure that was given at the Farm Bureau meeting last night, of a manufacturing facility, and who knows how much it's going to be, concrete parking lot in this area that is identified as having poorly drained soil, flat with a high water table, that we also don't have anything in our CIP for those roads that are going to be required. And it's going to be at the city's cost that those roads will have to be built, and it will be at the city's cost that the drainage is going to have to be put in to accommodate this. And all we have to do is look at that failed biomedical park to see what happens. That little strip along Princess Anne Road, which is a four-lane divided highway, just a little two-lane road into that area, has now gotten to an amount of city infrastructure cost for about 2,200 feet of that little two-lane road, the drainage replacing a sewer pump station and a stoplight. The city is also, is now up to $22,368,000 in infrastructure cost for that little The city is also, is now up to $22,368,000 in infrastructure cost for that little bit of a failed medical facility or park that is now just a regular park. Over $22 million for that little bit of infrastructure. What in the world is it going to cost to bring this area, which has no infrastructure around it to speak of, to extend those roads and so forth? That hasn't been costed out either. And no decision should be made until we know what the cost is going to be to the taxpayers. There are too many unanswered questions if you want to go forward. But if you're willing to stick with what we've lived with since 1979, and it's been successful, all we have to do is say no and go on.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Henley. My, I'll keep my remarks brief. We don't always agree, Councilwoman Henley, but I'm in the minority here, and I don't know where, we haven't really taken a vote. But I just want to thank you for the knowledge that you have of this topic because as a freshman, we don't have the records and we haven't spent the time to necessarily dig in like you have. And so I thank you for having that wisdom and sharing that knowledge because it is helpful in how we make decisions. My remarks tonight are for the young people that spoke up. When I decided to run, it was because I didn't see a lot of youth representing our council. So I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. But for you young people, Harvard and gentleman from Princess Anne, I believe, thank you because it inspires me to keep going. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Now that we're in a district system here, and we have 10 districts in Virginia Beach, and the green line in no way touches District 1, but I can tell you this, I stand with Ms. Henley and the good people of District 2 on this.
Great. Anybody else?
Listen, I want to thank you for a robust discussion. You know, once again, I think you're going to find that this council is truly engaged and welcomes public input. And, you know, we are going to make that, you know, our modus operandi, how we operate. Once again, this was an initial concept that was brought to us. And yes, there's not a lot of information yet. But given the complexity and, you know, the radical change that would be involved with this, you know, we did, we, you know, I concur with Ms. Henley to have a public comment session, you know, ahead. But once again, be assured, if we go forward with this, you know, there will be more than adequate, the questions that former Chief Severa asked and what your concerns are. But at least right now, today, we were able to sit here and find out what your concerns were, what bothered you about it, what needs to be rectified, and things of this nature. Be assured, this was just the first step. This is not the final outcome. As we go forward together and as we engage in any major project, because once again, yes, we do have the challenge, we're running out of land, and we're going to have to do some creative stuff for affordable housing and bringing those businesses that keep our children right here in Virginia Beach. But you can be assured that this body is going to be deliberative and that we're going to listen to your concerns. But once again, I thank you all for your participation. And be assured, we'll see you again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay, we're going to go next to the consent agenda, but first, I'm going to read the script for speakers. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address Folks, if we can kindly hold down. Thank you. Cumulative total of six minutes to address, a speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that have been signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, do we have any single item speakers?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one for L. 7, Rose Chandler. Ms. Chandler. She is in support, but she advised us she still wanted to speak. Is that correct? Okay. And this will be on the consent agenda as well.
Okay. Okay. There's only one speaker for all the items?
So, no, sir. So this is on the consent agenda. There's only one speaker for L. 7. So I was going to go ahead and let her speak, and then you all could go through the consent agenda and then move to the items that were filed.
All right. You know, come forward. Hey, Rose, how you doing?
Hi, I'm Rose Chandler. Some of you may know me as a 15-year, 17-year president of Bellamy Plantation Civic League, but tonight I'm here for Patty. I know no one's opposing, but I'd still like to say what I came here to say because it took a lot for me to come tonight. I did not want to come here tonight. I thought of a dozen different excuses of not attending, but supporting my friend Patty Gandy is one of the great, of a great importance and any other rehabber presenting in the future. See, my best friend was one of the four survivors who almost lost her life on May 31st in building 2 next door. So coming through those doors tonight is extremely hard for me, but I drew the strength from her tonight because I know it's important for me to be here representing something that I dearly love, as she does, and that's wildlife. We do not have enough rehabilitators in our area of Hampton Roads, and to speak up for someone trying to become one would be unfortunate. So I'm here on behalf of my friend Patty, seeking her conditional use permit to become a Cat 1 rehabber, which means she would be assisting to take care of wildlife that are orphaned and not injured, freeing the more experienced rehabbers such as myself to care for the injured. It took a lot of strength for me to walk through the doors tonight, so please know I'm here along with others, if they want to stand back there, their wave, for her to become one. I wish the board that lights up tonight wasn't a board of yes and no. Tonight, I wish the board lit up saying merely, "Thank you." It takes a special person to volunteer their lives 24/7. We take no vacations. We lose time with our families. We spend a lot of our own money for animals that we're going to release only back into the wild. But here she is tonight, ready to start her journey, and I hope you all say yes and thank you.
And Rose, let me just say this. I know you a long time. Thank you for your compassion and compassion in taking care of injured animals. You know, that is indeed, you know, a God-given gift to Virginia Beach. Thank you for doing what you do. You help define us as a city. Thank you and God bless you, Rose.
Thank you, Mom.
Mayor, that's all the speakers for the consent agenda items.
Okay. Ms. Henley, if you'd be so kind.
Okay. Under ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 1, ordinance to amend City Code Section 10-1.1 regarding add the Kempsville Area Library as a location for absentee voting in person. Item 2, resolution to move the July 4, 2023, regular meeting of the City Council to July 18, 2023. Item 3 is pulled. Item 4, ordinance to transfer funds and to award a $50,000 grant to the Lamb's Foundation regarding support for the coordination and organization of the 2023 Juneteenth Festival requested by Mayor Dyer and Councilmember Wooton. Item 5, an ordinance to appropriate $1.2 million from the Parking Enterprise Fund balance to fiscal year 2022-23 Economic Development Operating Budget regarding provide microtransit services in the resort area. Item 6, ordinance to accept and appropriate $32,025 from a class action settlement to capital project number 100397, that is, the Stormwater Quality Enhancements 2, regarding mitigate stormwater pollutants and improve water quality. Planning.
Okay. Open a public hearing on planning, please.
Item 1, it will be heard. Item 2, the Menwur and Julia Subai revocable joint trust DTD of 8/29/2013 for a change of zoning from B-2 community business to I-1 light industrial and a conditional use permit regarding a bulk storage yard at 7/28 South Military Highway, and that's in District 1. Item 3, Princess Anne Village LLC, Princess Anne Village LLC and City of Virginia Beach for a conditional change of zoning from Ag-2 agricultural district to conditional PDH-2 planned unit development, R-10 residential district, and a modification of proffers to a conditional rezoning regarding properties located at 2369, 2373, 2375, 2377, 2381, and 2385 Princess Anne Road, and 2393, 2401, 2413 North Landing Road, a parcel between 2023, 2393 North Landing Road, and 2385 Princess Anne Road, and that's in District 2. Item 4, Amar Yawo-Razi for a conditional change of zoning from Ag-2 agricultural to conditional B-2 community business and a conditional use permit regarding an automobile repair garage located between 2989 and 3,005 Holland Road, and that's in District 2. Item 5, Christina Danielle Patterson and JN and RBD LLC for a conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 3/28 Office Square Lane, Suite 203, in District 1. Item 6, Bold Beauty Inc., LLC, Alvin J. Laness Trust for a conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 9/68 South Oriole Drive, Suite 100, District 6. Item 7, Patricia A. Gandy, Scott M. Gandy and Patricia A. Gandy for a conditional use permit regarding a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility at 102 Willow Drive, and that's in District 6. Item 8, William J. Wright Jr., Beachfront Financing LLC for a conditional use permit regarding a short-term rental at 911 Pacific Avenue, Unit C, and that's District 5. Item 9, Tara Ryan and Pacific Air 3 LLC for a conditional use permit regarding short-term rental at 925 Pacific Avenue, District 5. Milton J. Price III for a conditional use permit regarding a short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 603, and that's District 5. Item 11, Francis Robbins Omen for a conditional use permit regarding a short-term rental at 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 217, and that's District 6. And item 12, an ordinance to amend Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code, Section 5.3.7, regarding temporary commercial parking lots.
Okay.
And I move approval.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Councilmember Henley.
Okay. Ms. Henley, ask for a, you know, an opportunity for a comment.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the Princess Anne Village application that we just approved, just to thank all of the people who have done work on this particular application. I know it's been in the works for five years. I think it's maybe closer to seven. I really appreciate all of the hard work that the applicants have put into meeting all the requirements for this. I know this was difficult. It's important that everybody, and some of you maybe who are new to the area, don't recognize that this is actually a redevelopment project. This particular area, for probably over a century and a half, was the commercial center of the courthouse with the Kellerman Eaton Sawmill, lumberyard, plumbing business, general store, post office, and any number of other things, all on that property for a long, long time. And redeveloping an area is quite difficult because of acquiring property, and this applicant actually, I think, acquired the estates of three families to put it all together and have worked really hard to make it come out. I know it's going to change the area. I don't like change either, but I recognize that things do have to be changed from time to time. And I think with all the work that's gone into this, it's going to be a good area for the next century. Also, there was the former railroad right-of-way from the time that this area was served by a railroad, and that, I think, has all been worked out so that that can be used as a like way. So I just want to thank all of you for all of the work that's gone into this. Thank all of the surrounding community for following it. And I appreciate your not giving up because it was a long, hard journey, but I think it's going to work out. And thank you a lot.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Number 3, resolution to outline the process to occur upon completion of interim agreement and future school facilities design process requested by Dyer, Renick, and Taylor. Okay. Any discussion? Yeah, Mr. Schulman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. As I was looking through this resolution, I just had a couple of things that gave me pause. And one of them is, we hadn't talked about it as a body. So I want to, I want to make sure that we, that we, if we were going to do something of this nature, that we did have an opportunity to talk about it as a body. But also, more importantly, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, we, you know, we unanimously came together after having worked with schools to fund, you know, to authorize the school board to enter into an agreement on interim design on three schools. And that was done after consultation, communication with our school counterparts. I did call to try and figure out if any of that effort had been made to coordinate with them on the language that we see here, and I found out that that was not done. So that gives me pause. And the other aspect of it is, I mean, the school board has a signed agreement that they are already into. Community engagement has commenced. We've had several community meetings on these schools, as well as Planning Task Force Advisory Committee meetings. And I think the schools have certainly gotten the message that we are interested in making these schools affordable and to try and find efficiencies. I know that they do plan on coming back to us with interim reporting and that several of us serve as, you know, as members of the Planning Advisory Task Forces along with school board members. So for those reasons, I would respectfully ask and make a motion that this resolution be indefinitely postponed. And I'm happy to have, and I think the body should have, and in coordination with the school board and school division, a comprehensive conversation going forward about, you know, about the next schools and how we fund those. And we just do that a little bit more holistically and in coordination with the schools.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Schulman. As a liaison to the School Modernization Committee, this has been a long process. As a liaison to the School Modernization Committee, this has been a long process. In working with city manager and staff, the first email went out on the 25th to the clerk, and it was brought to the body via email on the 26th of April, handed out on May 2nd. And I did have an opportunity to speak with Dr. Ross Hammond via email, Councilman Rimmick, Mayor Dyer, Councilwoman Henley sent her an email, as well as Councilwoman Suprema Wooten. There were no questions that came forth, so I'm not going to oppose your motion, Councilman Shulman. But I did want to have some comments for the public, and this, again, is for the 450,000 people that are in our city. By law, city council approval will be required, of course, prior to entering into a comprehensive agreement to further design and construct the three facilities via the PPEA. In addition to the reporting discussed above, the school board would need to adopt a resolution to request the city council approve a comprehensive agreement. What was not established or clearly articulated were the steps beyond that point in time. The proposed resolution seeks to establish a roadmap for the public and the city council to understand the options and obligations included in any new or substantially renovated schools, facilities. It's also an opportunity for the school board and city council to work collaboratively to ensure the facility requirements are met while being mindful of taxpayer affordability. And I was able to sit in a session last week over at Bayside High School, and I left a little early, so maybe I missed it, but there really wasn't a comprehensive, robust discussion about the cost aspect, and that's my concern. This resolution clarifies that funding limitations could result in the need to pivot to an alternative, scalable facility option. As the elected body with taxing authority, the city council needs to be made aware should schools, facilities create an undue financial burden upon the residents of the city. In doing some further research into the PPEA, we found a few municipalities within the state that have used it, one being Falls Church City Public Schools, and their process looked a little bit different. And so I'm going to ask for your patience, but I want to read you their process as compared to ours. The first phase was conceptual proposal phase. This is Falls Church City Public Schools, and they have used this PPEA procurement process on each of the last four school projects. After issuing the RFP around November 30 of 2017, the process enters a phase we call conceptual proposal phase. During this phase, the city and schools will be preparing to evaluate the proposals received and the response to the RFP. And I want to pause there because in my first meeting as a liaison to the School Modernization Committee, we were told we could not have insight into the second proposal, the second contractor. That was concerning. I'll continue. This will include opportunities for community involvement and the selection of outside experts and advisors to guide the review. It is anticipated that experts in municipal finance, commercial real estate, school construction, as well as legal advisors will be engaged to assist in the review. Again, we didn't have that luxury. PPE Phase Two, Detailed Design Phase. The shortlisted firms will then have approximately 90 additional days to develop detailed design proposals in response to the issuance of a request for detailed design proposals. The second RFP will ask the proposers to refine their conceptual designs and begin to lock in on the details of the proposal to include specific cost, designs, scope, and importantly, schedule. The city council and school board will engage the same and possibly additional experts to assist them with the review of the detailed design responses. Once a proposal meets the goals of the community, the city and schools will begin negotiating a comprehensive agreement with the selected firm. So that was the motivation of bringing this forward, to provide some additional clarity and protections on our side. But as I understand, Councilman Shulman does have the support to delay this indefinitely, and so it's not something I'm going to stand in the way of, but I did want to clearly articulate to the public, the goal of this was to, again, clearly establish what was not articulated, and that was the steps beyond that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, if I could just say, this is indeed a complex issue, and, you know, once again, as we go forward, you know, with the fiscal challenges and everything, you know, I think the suggestion that, you know, the council as a body have a robust, you know, conversation on it with the goal of, you know, definitely improving, you know, the communications with the school and to the public, and, but once again, you know, the fiscal challenges that we face are going to be, you know, up there, but, you know, let's try to figure out a way to get to yes on this, okay? We had a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Rimmick? Okay, vote will be open. Worth Rimmick.
By a vote of nine to zero, you deferred this item indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to-
I'm sorry, nine to one. I apologize.
Okay. Moving on to the planning items, Commonwealth, Common Charities, Diocese of Richmond, group home at 642 North Landing Road, District Eight.
The applicant, Jay Brown.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. I'm Jay Brown, the CEO of Commonwealth Catholic Charities. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Tuesday Jackson, who serves as our Director of Children's Services. Our proposal is to modify the existing conditions of a facility that has operated as a group home for children for decades. Our ask is to extend the potential length of stay for children in our care from two weeks to 90 days. The zoning ordinance of Virginia Beach does not have a length of stay requirement for these facilities. However, our licensing requirements do limit our ability to serve these children to 90 days, and therefore, we've accepted this limitation to conform to the regulations of our licensing body. We do appreciate you considering our application tonight. With respect to the citizens who have come to speak, the hard work of the Virginia Beach planning staff, and the previous deliberations of the Planning Commission, we do recognize there are some remaining questions, and therefore do request that you defer this item and allow us to continue our efforts to reach out to the community and provide additional facts and information regarding our ministry. Again, we appreciate your consideration and for all the support and the hard work of the planning staff who have helped us get here before you today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any, you know, preferred, you know, timeframe, you know, for the deferral?
We were, we were, we were, it was suggested that we offer an indefinite deferral to make sure that we're able to satisfy everyone's concerns.
Okay. Okay, Michael?
I do have a question, if you will permit. You mentioned that the length of time was required by the licensing body. Who is the licensing body?
The Virginia Department of Social Services.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Chris?
Thanks for coming today. I just wanted to thank you for taking, for the call earlier and for heeding the advice because ultimately, as I've listened to residents in the district, and my wife and I, our family resides across the street, and as I mentioned to you, I used to mentor young adolescents from the Seaton house, and although they weren't perfect, they weren't dangerous kids. And I think, you know, some of the narrative that's gotten out there has not been helpful. But in speaking to the residents that I've spoken with, I want to clearly communicate with you tonight that they've shared they're not against what you want to do, but they lack understanding. And so when there's a lack of understanding, that can lead to chaos, and we don't want chaos in District Eight. And so I hope that we'll be able to work together to get these public engagements, to get some town halls, so that you can get the support of not only the residents that reside in that area, including myself, but also this council and the body. Thank you.
Okay, Josh?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I just, I wanted to say thank you and encourage anybody who is here or listening or watching to watch the Planning Commission hearing that you took part in, and I want to thank you for the work that you do. And I understand that these children, ages five to 17, come here, in some cases, against their will or for a whole host of reasons, and by the time they are vetted and potentially brought here, that it is in view that they have families and relatives here in the United States that have jobs and are gainfully employed, who can support them, and who are also cleared in terms of background checks and whatnot. So I really, I encourage you to continue your work with the civic league and the surrounding community, but I just, I want to, I want to say that you are one of the examples of the many that exist in our city that show our compassion and caring for not only youth, but everybody. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
One last person.
Okay.
I was just going to say again, thank you for your willingness to do a due diligence. So this way, everything is clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, okay.
We have additional speakers.
Okay, no other speakers?
No, no, sir, we do have additional speakers.
There are other speakers.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The next speaker is L. Burhold. Am I saying that right? Close. And then Don Linaski.
Good evening.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I think I'm one of the few not here to talk about the Green Line tonight. I'm here to talk to you about the Catholic Charities application, and I wholeheartedly ask you to approve the application. I'm also a member of District Eight. I live in the Lynn Haven community, and I wholeheartedly support the group home. I support the group home's modification. I am not here in any capacity other than my own as a private citizen. I did attend Johns Hopkins University 12 years ago, where I completed my master's thesis on the problem of unaccompanied minors in the U.S. immigration system. It breaks my heart, Mr. Mayor, that we're still talking about this 12 years later, and that I have been able to make an adult lifestyle and a career out of this problem, which has been kicked down the road by administration after administration since the late 90s. Hundreds of thousands of unaccompanied minors are brought to this country, in many cases, against their will, due to economic desperation, due to threats against their families in their home country, due to administrative errors or bureaucratic incompetence, in some cases, by our very own federal government. But I would tell you that in, in all of these cases, we're talking about children who were brought here and who are, therefore, in my opinion, innocents. And I would say that as a member of this community, I'm not concerned about the security around this group home any more than I am concerned about the security around Lynn Haven Mall, around the gun raids down on Independence Avenue. I think there is just as good of a chance that the kids in that group home could be my next doctor or my next nurse, as it is that they could be a safety problem in this community. I think that due to the comprehensive failure of our immigration system over the last, my entire lifetime, all of us as Americans have a responsibility to do whatever we can to make things a little better for the least of us, and if the least among us is not an unaccompanied migrant child, I don't know who it is. I am eager to see this center open. I'm eager to volunteer my time. I would invite all of you and the other members of my community to join me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
The next speaker is Don Linaski. After Mr. Linaski is Jimmy Frost.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening to you. Folks, Don Linaski, 50-year resident, Little Neck, 50-year parishioner, St. Nicholas I think everybody has to be educated on what's taken place. We're talking about human trafficking coming to Virginia. Let's follow the money. Commonwealth Catholic Charities receives $127 billion a year from the government to fund immigration. Their parent company, Catholic Charities USA, who's located in the Beltway, is receiving $3 billion a year from the government for immigration. And St. Nicholas Church, who's an affiliate, as is Catholic or Commonwealth Catholic Charities, they're going to be receiving $4,500 a month rent for these, quote, "children." Human trafficking is coming to Virginia Beach. It's coming to Little Neck. These individuals, regretfully, are streetwise, they're mature, they're illegal, they're unvetted, and they're being staged in Virginia Beach. They're only going to be here for 90 days. Then they're going elsewhere, supposedly going to sponsors. They also owe the cartels, the smugglers, who got them across the border. Very few of these people will be going to school. They'll be going to work to pay back the cartels and the smugglers that got them here. As a Little Neck resident, I think the city has a responsibility-
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I also have handouts that I'll leave-
With the city clerk.
Okay.
The next speaker is Jimmy Frost. And after Mr. Frost is Teresa Langwell. She'll take it, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Jimmy.
How do? This information's from the New York Post. Do you think groups like United Way Catholic Charities and the Center for American Refugees are charities? They're running a scam. They get millions from government contracts to facilitate illegal immigration. Politicians seem to want illegal immigration, they just don't want their fingerprints on it. That's where these NGOs come in. Even before crossing the border, migrants still in Mexico are being handed debit cards loaded with $800 a month to enable them to pay for necessities. These gift cards are distributed by a nonprofit called the Organization for Migration funded by the U.S. State Department. After surrendering to Border Patrol, many migrants are directed to Catholic Charities, which provides them with hotel rooms, meals, clothing, and sometimes pays for a bus or plane ticket to their chosen destinations. Sister Norma Pimentel, I believe it is, Executive Director of Catholic Charities of the Rio Grande, explains that the mission is merely to give a cup of water in Jesus' name, except the money isn't coming from a collection basket. Sister Pimentel admits her organization is reimbursed by the federal government. The last straw for me was yesterday when a hotel in Newburgh, New York, that was housing homeless veterans, put them in the street to make room for illegal aliens. Let me be clear, we owe illegal immigrants nothing. Let me be clear, we owe illegal immigrants nothing. We owe our veterans everything. When the government allows the tsunami to overwhelm our cities, then abandons our veterans to fend for themselves, this is an insult to every American of biblical proportions. So how do we stop it? If Catholic Charities wants to help anyone, there's the homeless veterans who are forced to make room for those who jumped a very long line of people waiting to immigrate to our country legally. Or is there no money in that? Governing requires you to do, for one, what you must do for all. If some other nonprofit wants to offer services for more illegal immigrants, you'll have to, you'll set the precedent. Should you approve this application, I promise you, it won't be the end. It will only be the beginning. This council should reject this application because this line needs to be drawn in the sand now. We owe it to ourselves, to our national sovereignty, and damn it, we owe it to our now displaced veterans to say no. We will never get a handle on this problem unless cities like ours start pushing back against our federal government by voting no. The time for this is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Teresa Langwell.
Hi. Thank you. I'm here just as a, this was kind of a special sort of subject to me. So I'm here as a Christian and as a civilian. I talked to someone in government about this because I was worried more, not so much that they're creating this place if they want to pay for it, until I found out federal monies were going for it and probably city monies. And there are many churches across this city, many. There are many organizations that do a lot. And I think I spoke about charities before. I personally do not like any of my tax money going to an organization of any sort that is known for child abuse. Those children that are there need to be tracked. They need to be taken care of. And we know that, no offense to the Catholic Church, but we know that they're very slow to follow up on problems that they have like that. And it really just seems shady to me. The thing that concerns me the most is my own monies. When I, and I go to Long Island Bridge is where I go, and I donate, and I don't talk about where I donate or anything. I just do what I do. If the Catholic Church wants to help children out, they should put them in their schools and pay for it. They should pay for, put them on their health care plan. They should make sure that they are taught our Constitution. In my case, since it's a Christian organization supposedly, learn the Bible and learn what our history is made of. We're just not givers. There's a responsibility with giving as an American citizen. So I'm concerned with all these charities that our tax money is being given out to. As far as their children, it's very touchy. I was told that they needed more Christian laborers, and we needed to get out and help all the illegal immigrants. And we're stretched right now, working at different schools, supplying lots of book bags and all kinds of things, all year long. I think it's really asking a lot, and it is not the place of government to play God. They created this mess. That border is open like it is because of government. And I think government trying to fix it is just going to make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, would you like to come up for rebuttal?
Just a few things with Mr. Linesky's figures. Our organization's operating budget is less than $24 million a year, so we do not receive $127 million annually to provide these services. I have to check the lease agreement that we have with St. Nicholas Catholic Church. We are compensating them for use of the facility. That's really to make sure that the facility's upkeep is there so that we can continue to utilize the property over time. To the young lady who just spoke, we do all of those things that she suggested that Catholic Charities ought to do with children, and so we certainly appreciate the opportunity to make that clear.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, I was curious if, I know you're here tonight requesting an indefinite deferral. I'd be more inclined to set some sort of a time limit on it, just to make sure that it gives you enough time to do what you need to do, but also ensures that it comes back to the council in a timely fashion so that we can take the issue up. Would you be supportive of a 60-day deferral as opposed to indefinite? Do you feel that that might give you sufficient time?
We think that would be sufficient on the far end if the opportunity would exist for to bring it back sooner than that. Should we be able to get to some kind of consensus, then we would certainly appreciate that as well.
So you would be in favor, my inclination would be to suggest 30-day deferral, and would that be something that you would be amenable to?
The 30 days would be better for us, we believe, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody? Well, I think, yeah, do we have any questions?
Yes, just one quick question. Just dawned on me. What, do you all get a per student allowance from the federal government?
No, sir. We're reimbursed on a cost, on a cost basis.
All righty. You know, I think the important thing is you heard some of the concerns, and I think that has to be the focus.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion for, Josh?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer this item for a period of 30 days.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second. Okay. Second, Mr. Belucci. Any other discussion? Vote is open.
So we'll put it for June 20th? That's 30 days? Is that good? Okay. Just wanted to do it to date, sir.
As long as that's a Tuesday.
That's, that is the third Tuesday. Yes, sir. It is, June 20th. Don't worry, second guess. Yes. So Dr. Ross Hammond, if I could have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 10 to zero, this application has been deferred to June 20th.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for participating today. There are no appointments. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.